Hello, I'm Lesley Cullen, Voter Service Chair of the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County. And on behalf of the League, I am pleased to welcome you to this candidate forum sponsored by the League in partnership with the City of Murfreesboro. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent opportunity for voters to become more familiar with the candidates and their positions. We appreciate the support from Murfreesboro City Government provided by Alan Boesman and his staff. They enable broadcasting and streaming of our forums to reach a large number of voters. The League seeks to conduct our forums in a nonpartisan manner. Key participants, especially the moderator, are not publicly aligned with any candidate. In the upcoming Murfreesboro City Elections, you will be voting for important positions in city government such as Murfreesboro City School Board and Murfreesboro City Council. Early voting started July 13th and runs through July 28th. In a process that's new this year and implemented by the Rutherford County Election Commission to increase voter convenience on Election Day itself, that's August 2nd, you will be able to vote at any one of the voting centers located throughout Rutherford County. To learn which voting location will be best for you on Election Day, visit the Rutherford County Election Commission at www.ruco.vote. We thank you for your attention as you hear these candidates introduce themselves and answer questions about pertinent issues facing our city. We hope you find this forum useful in deciding which candidates you choose to support. Remember, your vote gives you a prime opportunity to influence how government is conducted in Murfreesboro. Please make your decision known by voting. Thank you for joining us, and remember, your vote counts.
I'm C. Graham, and I will serve as the moderator for this candidate forum. This forum is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, and Murfreesboro City TV and the Murfreesboro City Cable Commission. The League believes that candidate forums provide an excellent way for voters to become more familiar with candidates and their positions. It is my pleasure to welcome both our audience here at City Hall and our viewers at home to this program. This evening, we will be hearing remarks from the candidates for Murfreesboro City School Board Special Election. Before introducing the candidates, I would like to outline the procedure for the forum. Each candidate will be asked to make an opening statement in a two-minute period. When all candidates have completed the opening statement, then several additional questions will be asked. The candidates will respond to each of those questions with a one-minute answer. The candidates will be allowed two minutes to answer the last question and make any closing remarks. I will begin by introducing each candidate. I want to thank each of them for their gracious acceptance of our invitation to participate in this event. Mr. Jeffrey Herring.
Hello.
Mr. David LaRoche.
Hello.
Dr. Carrie Neely.
Hello.
Mr. Jimmy Richardson.
Good evening.
Speaking first is Mr. Herring. You may make your opening statement, and you have two minutes.
Great, thank you so much. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Mothers Demand Action, the NAACP, and the Murfreesboro Education Association for having these forums so that you, the citizens of Murfreesboro, and us as candidates can learn from each other, so we can share our vision and you can see where that might line up with your vision. I'd like to thank my wife, Kim, my children, Skylar and Chandler, both city school, former city school participants, they've grown up a little bit, my parents, Bob and Joan Herring, both retired teachers, and my sister who's also a teacher for supporting me through this process. I'd like to thank my fellow candidates again for being such gracious candidates during this process and educating me to learn more about oh-so-much. I'd like to also publicly apologize to Amanda Moore, who yesterday, I called Amanda, so it's Amanda Moore, I called her Amber, I'm sorry, yesterday, see if I can butcher that again. She did a wonderful job of sharing with us that a budget is a great representation, a statement of our values, and I'm very grateful for that. I am a candidate to serve specifically to give children, teachers, and the greater community a voice in how our most treasured assets, our children, are cared for, educated, and nurtured so that our future leaders will be the brightest and the best. I share your concerns about safety, curriculum development, the challenges that our teachers face, not just the financial challenges, both in their salary, their compensation packages, but in the fact that they always have to come out of pocket to do those unfunded mandates that we place upon them. I hope that I can serve and plan to serve regardless of the outcome of this election, and I've already made arrangements to assist in some capacities through the Director's Office. Thank you so much.
Mr. LaRoche.
Good evening, I'm David LaRoche. Thank you so much, the League of Women Voters, and I also want to thank my fellow candidates. Murfreesboro is very fortunate to have four excellent, interesting, compassionate, well-meaning, intelligent people, and it's been a real honor to do these forums with you guys, and I wish everybody the best of luck. Like I said, my name's David LaRoche, I am a Murfreesboro native, I practice law here in town, and for the past 12 years, I've been involved in lots of different community service, many different nonprofits, the Murfreesboro Main Street Association, through Rutherford County, the Center for the Arts, to name a couple. But most of my work, that which I'm most proud of, has been with the private foundation, the Murfreesboro City Schools Foundation. I spent about eight years with them in various capacities, including president, and all those years, I was the chairman of a grant review committee where I had the great privilege of reading hundreds of grants written by our Murfreesboro City Schools teachers, asking for technology and assistance for their schools. And in that capacity, I've really learned a lot about how our system works and what our teachers need to be as best as they can. I would like to take my knowledge as an attorney representing nonprofits, business organizations, and apply it to what I've learned working for the City Schools Foundation, and really be an advocate for the teachers and the students of Murfreesboro, as well as representative of all the people in this community who support and really rely on our good, excellent public education system. I plan on keeping it going strong, and I appreciate y'all's vote.
Dr. Neely.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight, and I'd like to echo my fellow candidates for their participation tonight and in the participation in the other forums. I've really enjoyed getting to know all three of you, and I thank you very much for your willingness to serve. So I'd like to introduce myself to you tonight, and I'd like to start by giving you my background and qualifications for this position. I've spent the last 20 years of my life in public education. In the last 12, I've been a full-time professor at MTSU. While at MTSU, I've been able to do a number of things related to education. For example, I've been the director of my department's Master of Arts in Teaching Program, where we prepare teachers for the K-12 classroom. I've also had the privilege of serving as both the vice chair and the chair of the General Education Committee, where we oversee and evaluate our general education courses. I've also served on other committees such as the Curriculum Development Committee, I've served on a search committee to help choose our next faculty members in my department, and I've also written grants that have enabled my department to hire other faculty members. In addition to that, my real drive and motivation for running for City School Board is to help children with learning disabilities. One in five children have a learning disability, and my daughter is one of those children. But she's quite more than a statistic, she is a very great student who has been through the Murfreesboro school system, and she has thrived because of teachers and their willingness to help her. And I want to be able to be an advocate for families like mine and for teachers, because that is my education and my profession, and I want to be able to give back to it. So I'm asking for your vote, and I appreciate you all tuning in tonight. Again, I'm Dr. Carrie Neely.
Mr. Richardson.
Good evening, and thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, our moderator, and of course, our extraordinarily qualified candidates. I recognize the difficult choice that each of you have, the passion that has come from each candidate, whether it's in the special election or in the general election, has been inspiring. My name is Jimmy Leo Richardson III. I'm a proud product of public schools right here in Rutherford County. I'd like to thank my wife, so she can get mad at me later, Shayna Blair Richardson, the love of my life, who keeps me up here and keeps me going every day. I'm a former educator and attorney. I'm an attorney that represents primarily children that have been abused, neglected, and abandoned, and what I want to do is take that experience and apply it in our schools. I want to take that passion and apply it in our schools. I want to be your voice on the school board. I want to be your child's voice on the school board. I want to be your teacher's voice on the school board, to empower and to advocate for their needs for smaller classrooms, because we know that small classrooms, a ratio like we have in Murfreesboro, nearly 20 to 1, increases safety, increases the likelihood that education access will be equal and be fair. Nearly a third of our teachers in Murfreesboro have less than five years' experience, and we need to focus on professional development as well as mentorships. But first and foremost above all other things, I want to be your voice with regards to the prevention of school violence and the marginalization of those with special needs. Folks, I'm running because I believe I can make a difference, and I hope that you do too. Thank you.
We will now turn to our first question. This question will be answered first by Mr. LaRoche. You will have one minute to answer this question, and I will be repeating the same question for each candidate. Mr. LaRoche, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
What I would like to focus on in city schools, the change that we can make, would be, we're developing a lot of very large schools to deal with the population growth our community has. I think there's a place for smaller schools, specialty schools, that focus on different areas, whether it's STEM, whether it's performing arts, whether it's learning differences. I think Murfreesboro has a lot of need for that. Funding is the problem. As a city school board member, I want to be an advocate, not only for the city council, but also the state of Tennessee, to make sure we get the resources to fund some choice schools that are publicly funded.
Dr. Neely, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
Thank you. I'd like to start by saying that I think that Murfreesboro City Schools is definitely improving. I've seen a lot of development over the years that my daughter has attended, and one of the things that I really have appreciated and want to see continue is the development of critical thinking skills with our children. I think that critical thinking skills enables our children to be prepared for life in a global economy. I think that is really crucial. And when we look at education experts today in the field, they're telling us that while STEM is a really great system, and we should be continuing to advocate for that, we also really need to focus on soft skills, like being able to communicate effectively, both written and orally. We also need to be able to use the kind of mediums that we now have at our disposal, and those are things that we see our teachers actually implementing in our classrooms, and I want to see that continue. But I think that that's an area that we can continue to evolve in as we continue to evolve as a society and keep adopting new kinds of technologies.
Mr. Richardson.
I think one of the best things we can do in Murfreesboro is to have dedicated future sites for schools. Our overpopulation is becoming one of the foremost issues that we're dealing with as teachers and educators and folks that live here in Murfreesboro. And by having a forethought plan with regards to what capital improvements are required and dedicating those services in those places three and five and 10 years in advance is a fiscally responsible way to move forward, to encourage the legislature's willingness to fund what the teachers so desperately need, and that is things that empower them to educate their students directly rather than by a standard from the state. We need to be fiscally responsible so that we can make sure the things our children need, they are able to get, and they can be paid for. Thank you.
I will repeat the question and apologize for not having done that previously. Mr. Herring, what changes would improve city schools, and how could those changes be implemented?
Obviously, I can echo the sentiments of my fellow candidates since they're many changes, but they're challenges that affect teachers daily, and that would be in the form of curriculum challenges. Although not a curriculum specialist by any means, I know that our teachers are constantly, as frequently as every year, having to adjust, develop, and/or alter significantly what they teach so as to teach to the standards. I feel that much of my energy as an advocate for Murfreesboro City Schools might be focused on our legislators and their understanding of these inconsistencies so that we might establish a more consistent model, and therefore, a solid foundation upon which we build a better curriculum, but not one that requires rebuilding every single year, but one that can allow our teachers to focus and so that our children can learn more effectively and become the next round of leadership in our community. Thank you.
We will now turn to our next question. This question will be answered first by Dr. Neely. What is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
Thank you for that question. As a mom of a child who attends public schools, I can tell you that I know that we are all probably frustrated with the amount of standardized testing that is going on currently in our schools. I was talking to her today to find out how many times in a given month that she may have been tested, and I know that there have been months where it's been two or three times. We clearly do not need that much standardized testing in our schools. As a person who served on committees that do evaluations of programs, I know that there is a certain need that we have to make sure that those programs are quality programs and that our students are meeting their student learning outcomes. However, it should not be the basis of how we measure the success of our programs. It can be a part of it, a component, but it should not be the single measure. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
Testing and evaluations are absolutely vital, they're crucial. We must have a metric to be able to determine where we are. Without knowing where we are, we don't know where we can go. But the metrics must be fair, the results must be timely. Getting results three months into a school year is not going to help us, it is therefore an invalid metric. I would ask that we not focus on regurgitation of facts or recitation of what a state standard is. I've said this before, state standards are a floor. We can rise above that, and we can empower teachers through small classrooms to continue to advocate for that exact thing. Thank you.
Mr. Herring, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
I think standardized testing certainly gives us an opportunity for a benchmark of success, but as we know from experience for many years now, the standards have changed at least every three months, if not more frequently than that, which doesn't allow our teachers to teach to that which they would also be measured on, nor does it allow our children to learn something that might actually be fun and enjoyable and that they might take with them. So having a benchmark along the way, I think, is invaluable, but having it as the only metric that we measure success from, I think, is a shame, and one that I hope that, again, working with legislators, we can work to a consistent curriculum and then an opportunity to test accordingly. Thank you.
Mr. LaRoche, what is your position regarding standardized testing and evaluations?
I took lots of standardized tests in my many years in public education. I think that accountability is important as are setting benchmarks. However, it's clear to me, the standardized testing, whereas we would think that it would expose social inequalities, I think it actually exacerbates a lot of social inequalities among students in our school system. Obviously, the industry's been taking over by vendors who are selling our state expensive products that don't work. Our legislatures are spending a lot of time focusing on tests when they should be focusing on our kids and our teachers, and it's a problem that needs to be addressed probably at the local level. I think that our teachers know what is best for our students, I think our teachers know when students are not doing as well as they should, and we should trust them to do the right thing rather than having the state come in and make people fill out circles to make those decisions for them.
We will now turn to our next question. Mr. Richardson, you will answer first. What can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
Thank you for that. As I alluded to in my opening statement, we've got teachers, nearly a third, that have less than five years' experience. Through professional development programs and mentorship programs, we're able to maintain those quality educators in our schools that have done such an extraordinary job, and through their success, we can use that as a model to recruit teachers right in our own backyard with MTSU, which we have a great partnership with. I think that, I've said this before too, they're businesses, local businesses, they want to partner with us, they're eager to partner with the school systems, and I believe that through partnerships, common sense partnerships with local business, and through the products of our educators, we can bring in even better educators and grow our system to make sure that we have fair and equal education for every student.
Mr. Herring, what can the city school board do to recruit and retain good teachers?
Obviously, there are many variables that come into play. Compensation would be one that has to be towards the top of the list. If you want the best in any field, you have to compensate people to attract them. Having a consistent program with opportunities for advancement would be another component of that. Having the ability to, as Mr. Richardson pointed out, a professional development curriculum for teachers, so they also know what to expect, they know the metrics by which they will be measured, and then they can transfer that consistency through hopefully a consistent curriculum to their students, and then the success for all. But I think those opportunities for teachers to advance is certainly important there. Thank you.
Mr. LaRoche, what can the city school board do to recruit and retain good teachers?
I think that we should treat teachers like the heroes that they are. They are every bit the first responders that the police and firemen and paramedics are. They're a first line of education in our community. We pay them right, we give them benefits, we treat them like the heroes that they are, we give them educational opportunities to enhance not only themselves but also their environment in the classroom. We provide money and support to them, teachers are going to stick around.
Dr. Neely, what can the city school board do to help recruit and retain good teachers?
Well, thank you for that question, and I'd like to start by saying that I'm in a unique position because we do train teachers in my department to go out into our schools and teach. And one of the things that they say when they come back is they're just not prepared for the long days and the hours after they get through grading. And so I think that we could do a lot there to try to help with managing the amount of work, the workload that they do have. Obviously, teachers need to have resources, we need to be able to provide them with the resources they need in their classrooms so that they can deliver the kind of quality education that all of us want for our children. And of course, we want to make sure that we have competitive pay for our teachers, because if they have the opportunity to go someplace else where they're going to be paid more, they're obviously going to take that. So we want to always be competitive with our salaries and our benefits packages. Thank you.
We are now going to be answering our last question. This question will be answered first by Mr. Herring. You will have two minutes to answer this question, and then you can make any closing remarks that you would like to say. So, Mr. Herring, what do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
Well, the board certainly needs to advocate for everyone involved in the process. As I have less than two minutes, I certainly also want to thank you again. But advocacy is something that is sorely needed, particularly at the legislative level, and bringing that opportunity to legislators to better understand the challenges that we at the local level have because of such diversity is something that is invaluable, certainly something that has been attempted and will continue to be. I'll ask that you indulge me as I close, and I want to thank you, and I want to encourage you to vote, but I'm going to read something very quickly. It's called "Don't Widen the Plate." In Nashville, Tennessee, during the first week of January 1996, at the 52nd Annual American Baseball Coaches Association Convention, Coach Skalinas, aged 78 and five years retired from a college coaching career that began in 1948, shuffled to the stage in an impressive standing ovation. After speaking for 25 minutes, not once mentioning the prop, which was a home plate tied around his neck, he said, "You're probably wondering why I'm wearing home plate around my neck. In the interest of time, I'll move through this. Do you know how wide home plate is? Seventeen inches. How wide is it in Babe Ruth High School, College, Minor League, and Major League? Seventeen inches. Seventeen inches, he confirmed. What do we do when our best player shows up late to practice? When our team rules forbid facial hair and a guy shows up unshaven? What if he gets caught drinking? Do we hold him accountable, or do we change the rules to fit him? Do we widen the plate?" Chuckles faded. Obviously, I think there's a lesson there. I think we should not widen the plate, I think we should give teachers what they need to teach, we should be held accountable for that as not just the board, but as a community. And I welcome anyone's observations otherwise from that and your comments, and I do encourage you all to vote. Thank you so much.
Mr. LaRoche, what do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
Whether we have population growth or not, the role of the school board and government in general is to improve the life of as many people in the best way possible. In my work with the City School Foundation, the money we raise not only goes to teacher grants that I discussed earlier, but we also identify schools that don't have a lot of PTA involvement, and we spend some of our money, we call it parity funds, to kind of prop up those schools. I know that the data is there, we can identify schools that don't have the support that some of the wealthier schools do, and that can't be right. We don't need to rely on private foundations to identify and supplement those schools. It should be the responsibility of the school board to find the schools, to find the students, to find the teachers that need the most help, and we've got to give them extra help to do it. It's not about taking money away from people, it's about bringing everybody up to the same level. The role of our board should be identify and raise money and help those schools. I just want to reiterate my work with the City School Foundation, as well as my career in the law and public service, and I really believe that I'm going to be a great advocate for the teachers and the students of the school board. I've got a great heart, I take public service very seriously, it's one of my favorite things in the world. I urge everybody to come out and vote, we've got great candidates in this and the other regular school board election, and I appreciate the opportunity given to me to have this forum by the League of Women Voters, and look forward to serving everybody in Murfreesboro.
Dr. Neely, what do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to begin by saying I work in one of the most diverse departments at MTSU, in the Foreign Language Department, we have quite a big diverse staffing in our department. And so I'm used to working with diverse populations. My students themselves represent all kinds of backgrounds and really are a cross-section of our society in the way that we see it developing. So I feel like I'm uniquely qualified to help the school board meet those needs of the various communities that we now represent in this area. So we also have to continue to work on our statistics and making sure that we know how to provide for the growth. That's really a great problem to have, because if you're growing in an area, then that means that you're not having to cut back. So as long as we are able to get that kind of funding to continue to or increase our building of schools, then we'll be able to keep pace and make sure that our school classroom sizes are 20 to 1, and in that ratio for students to teachers, which is what we want according to the BEP. Now, I'd like to talk about why this election is really important and how I can contribute to the school board. You know that you have four votes for this school board. That means that we are going to be having a very big change in the dynamics of our school board, and I think that having an educator on the board will be very beneficial. But not only that, I'm a mom, and I have met numerous families like mine as I've been going door-to-door and meeting with them, and they feel comfortable with me talking about their children and talking about their needs. And I really want to be able to give a platform for those families who need special education, who need the kind of intervention that sometimes it's hard to get in our district, and I want to be able to be there for them and advocate for our special education department, because I know that they're improving and they're growing, and I want to be their champion as well. So again, I think I'm qualified, and I think I have the motivation and drive to do this job and to do it well. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Richardson, what do you see as the role of the city school board in meeting the needs of the increasingly diverse student population that has resulted from the growth of Murfreesboro?
Thank you very much again to the League of Women Voters, thank you to the candidates and the moderators. I'll answer your question in one word and circle back. The answer is advocacy. But y'all, I made a mistake. I read something about myself on the internet last night, that's something you should never do. They saw a speech I gave a week ago, and they said, "Nice speech, but what have you done since then?" My Irish temper kind of got up a bit, but I'm married, so I realized I probably shouldn't say anything. But then I thought, that's a fair question. What have I done since last week? Since last week, I've represented, helped eight different children who were abused by drugs, four of which severely abused. I have two infants that were physically abused that I'm representing and kept away from their abusers. I've stopped the state of Tennessee from erroneously taking a child from a loving family off of false allegations. That's since last week. So what should the school board do? They should fight, they should advocate, they should not relent. Clearly, everyone up here is passionate and cares deeply about children, so the question becomes to you, who do you want to be your voice? Who do you want to be your child's voice when it comes to their physical safety, to their emotional stability, to their curriculum? Who will fight? Who will not stop? Who will not relent? I really, truly believe I can make a difference, and that's why I'm running, and I sincerely hope that you believe it too. I ask for your help to help me be that voice for your children, for your teachers, and for our city. Thank you all, God bless you all. Thank you.
Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the city of Murfreesboro, I want to thank all of the candidates for their participation today. I also want to recognize Murfreesboro Communications Director Alan Bozeman and his staff, and the Murfreesboro Cable Commission for their cooperation in presenting this program on Murfreesboro City TV located on Comcast Channel 3, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and on the city website. I want to encourage all Murfreesboro citizens to vote. Early voting began July 13th and goes through July 28th. Election Day is August 2nd. Please exercise this important right to determine who will be the Murfreesboro City School Board. Remember, your vote counts. May we close with a round of applause for the candidates.